Waiting for that last minute to tick off is like waiting for a pot of water to boil. I think I have a mask in here, somewhere in the... Oh, yeah.
One for you?
Yeah. Well, it's six o'clock and I will call the March meeting of the City of Carrollton's Mayor and Council meeting to order. If you will all stand with me, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll remain standing, Councilman Waters is going to do our invocation. Amen.
Before y'all sit down, we need to sing happy birthday to our mayor. We ready?
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Betty, happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Thirty-nine again.
She looks good for thirty-nine, doesn't she?
Okay, well, Mr. Triplet just informed me we don't have any citizens' comments, so we will mark that off. And we have, you have your minutes from the February meeting. You had a chance to read over those. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes? Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion, additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We're going to deviate a little bit from our agenda because we have some special guests here and we will let the Mayor and Council announcement and comments and City Manager announcements and comments move down to the last. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda items for consideration with the exception of removing the board appointment for the hospital authority?
I'll move that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, our first item on the agenda tonight is to recognize our Carrollton High School cheerleading squad. They were just honored with a great accomplishment and that was winning the state tier competition for their class. And I want to recognize these girls because I know it's a lot of hard work and we have a proclamation to recognize them. And I will read that proclamation. It says, "Office of the Mayor, Carrollton, Georgia, Certificate of Recognition, Varsity Football and Competition Cheerleading Squad at Carrollton High School, 2021 GHSA State Cheerleading Champions. Whereas it gives the Mayor and Council a tremendous amount of pleasure and pride to express to all the members of the Carrollton High School Varsity Football and Competitive Cheerleading Squad, players, coaches, and parents, our sincere gratulations for winning the 2021 GHSA State Cheerleading Competition, February 16th in Macon, Georgia. Whereas the squad has a history of bringing honor to Carrollton High School and the City of Carrollton, having won three state championships in the last four years and nine straight regional championships. And whereas the squad members, parents, and coaches won this championship despite a year of personal hardships, including deaths of loved ones, injury, and illness, whereas you are each to be commended for achieving excellence in the field of cheerleading. Now, therefore, we are pleased to publicly recognize the following members of the Varsity Football and Competition Cheerleading Squad, 2021 GHSA State Cheerleading Champions." And we have them all listed and I will read the names and I'm probably going to really butcher the first one. So, is it Amia? Amaya? Berchap, okay. Addison Kemp, Mary Catherine Cole, Anna Dedman, Savannah Duncan, Collier Green, Hutton Green, Ashley Halston, Molly Lanier, Aleah? Alaya? Merritt? Aleah? Merritt, Mary Moore, Shanaya Risper, Anna Claire Sides, Sidney Smith, Savannah Sullivan, Soraya Sukai? Sukow? Sukai, okay. Ansley Underwood, Haley White, Olivia Wyndham, and Blakely Young. For their fine efforts, I proudly present this certificate of an expression of our admiration, signed this first day of March, 2021. Betty Kason, Mayor. Okay, council members.
Dr. Johnson!
That was his favorite campaign slogan. If all the council members will come down with me and we'll get the pictures.
Thanks y'all for coming. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
You're so welcome. Okay. The second item on the agenda is a proclamation declaring March as American Red Cross Month. Whereas March is an American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in need every day in Carrollton and across the United States and the world, and whereas their dedication torches millions of, touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's 140-year mission of preventing and availing suffering. And whereas during the trying times of the Corona pandemic, people have stepped up to help others in need, whether it was responding to this year's record-breaking disasters across the country or rolling up their sleeves to give blood when our country faced a severe blood shortage. And whereas here in Carrollton, local families have relied on 36 volunteers for comfort and hope while coping with home fires, fallen trees, and flooding. Whereas last year, 36 Central Midwestern Georgia volunteers responded in person and have virtually, when called upon during a disaster, and helped 41 families affected by 34 home fires in Carroll County by addressing their urgent needs like food, lodging, and recovery support. And whereas last year in Carrollton, the Red Cross collected 3,132 units of blood assisting 181 families through service to the Armed Forces Program, 77 people life-saving skills such as CPR or first aid. Whereas this life-saving work is vital to strengthening our communities' resilience. With nearly 200 years since the birth of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance her noble legacy and we ask others to join in their commitment to care for people in need. Now, therefore, I, Betty Kason, Mayor of Carrollton, by virtue and authority vested in me by the laws of Carrollton and Georgia, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans to reach out and support this humanitarian mission. I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Carrollton to be affixed to this first day of March in the year of our Lord, 2021. And we don't have anyone here tonight from the Red Cross, but we will definitely get this to them. And we appreciate immensely the Red Cross and what they do for our communities and it's a great thing and if you have time to volunteer, I know they would appreciate it. Okay. The next item on the agenda is our fiscal year 2020 city audit presentation. Mr. Triplet?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are honored to have representatives from our audit firm, Rushton and Company, Mr. Chris Hollifield, Ms. Julie George, and Ms. Kelly Palmer. And I think Chris will be making the presentation for the audit FY '20 tonight, so at this time I'll turn the podium over to Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Mayor and Council, thank you for having us here to present your audit tonight. I want to thank Jim and Kevin and everything went very smooth. Kevin's first year on the audit, on the job this year during the audit, I thought it went very smooth and we're here to present the results to you tonight. I will say that you probably received, you may have received a bound book or at least in your package, it's a big thick, a lot of reading in here, a lot of numbers in there. We're going to go through a presentation here and you also have a hard copy if you want to follow along up there as well. So, if we go to slide one there on our presentation, so as you're looking through the audit report itself, there's three letters in there from our firm and I'll cover all three letters during the presentation. The first letter is our opinion letter. And in our opinion letter is where we talk about our responsibilities as auditors, what's the city's responsibilities, even though we assist in preparing these financial statements, the numbers, all the responsibility of the city, we work through with management to make any adjustments in reporting of those, but they are the city's responsibilities. We have given a good, clean opinion on the financial statements, so all that looked good. If we go to the next slide. So, in the financials, and I know as Jim reports to you on a monthly basis and you get those reports, you're used to seeing monthly budget actual reports, you may be looking at general fund, water and sewage, you may be looking at other funds within the city. But as we put these financial statements together, we're also required to put together a consolidation of all funds together. And that's what you'll see presented is a statement of net position, a statement of activity, sort of like in business terms, a balance sheet and income statement of all funds combined. On the next slide there, we've got some five-year numbers here that come from those two statements. And the first three columns here make up our net position, they flow over to the total net position. And we'll look at that bottom row there as we look at 2020. So, as you think about net position, so think about assets, everything that the city owns, all our cash, all our receivables, money that people owe us, all our infrastructure, all our buildings, our streets, our equipment vehicles, all that stuff in our assets, less any liabilities, everything that we owe, all our debt that we owe, any vendor payables that we owe, any retirement funds that we owe, assets less our liabilities to get down to our net position, okay? In that net position, it's made up of three numbers, our net investment in capital assets, 176,511, that's all our infrastructure, our capital assets, less any depreciation, less any debt that we owe on those, gets down to that balance. Then we have our restricted net position. So, we have those funds that may be restricted. A good example of that would be our SPOSS funds. Those are approved by voter referendum, they have to be spent on certain items that are approved in that, that would be an example of what's in 7.1 million dollars of our restricted net position. And then we have the remainder there of our unrestricted position, 15.3 million dollars. You see that's increased from 13.1 million dollars the previous year. And the total of those three columns add up to our total net position, 198.9 million dollars. You see, up from 195.3 the year before, okay? And then if we look at our revenue over expenses for the year, that was 3,615,115. You can see down just a little bit from the 5 million dollars, but certainly a good increase and a good increase in our net position. If we go to the next slide on our general fund, we talk about just this fund individually and we look at our revenues and our expenditures. So, our revenues were 23.5 million dollars, okay? And just some significant increases or decreases during the year, our property taxes increased, our motor vehicle taxes decreased, we pretty well have seen that across the board decrease for the cities. You may be familiar with the allocation rules that were changed several years ago with the TAVT when that was put into place. Those allocations have now been modified again. We expect the city to see an increase from this year, maybe back to where we were before, hopefully. Our local option sales tax increased, our insurance premium tax increased, our franchise tax increased. And then, of course, I know you're all aware, the year we've had with the COVID year, we've had recreation fees decreased significantly there. Our expenditures, 26.4 million dollars. If we look at the significance in here, they increased 1,489 in total. We have some significant capital purchases during the year, some patrol vehicles, bucket truck, a few other capital purchases. Some of those were funded by some capital leases that we had, 892,000 dollars were funded by capital lease proceeds. And then we look at our unassigned fund balance. So, just as a net position, in fund balance in the general fund, our assets less our liabilities, 13.8 million dollars. That's roughly about 6.3 months of operating reserves that we have in fund balance compared to our annual expenditures in our budget. That's a very healthy place for the city to be, okay? Anywhere three to four months is what we like to see, yours is 6.3 months, okay? Next slide, if we look at our revenue sources in the city, so the good thing that you take away from this picture right here is look at all the different pieces of the pie. So, when we're going through a year like we have COVID, or we're going through a year maybe when the economy is not so good, to have many pieces of the pie, different revenue sources that we have coming into the city. You see the top three sources of revenue there. One, the top source is actually local option sales tax, okay? Then we have property taxes and then we have various charges for services that come in there in the red piece of that pie. On our next slide, if we look at our expenditures, and we look at these by function, you see that the top three here we spend is police, okay? Culture and Recreation, number two, and then our fire is number three. And then you look at others like general government, public works, these are all the pieces of the pie that we spend out of the general fund. If we change to our water and sewage fund and we look at our revenues here, this fund's very healthy, this fund is performing very well. If you look at our operating revenue, 17.5 million dollars for the year, that's a little over 2 million dollar increase from the prior year, 13.5%. Our operating expenditures, 12.5 million dollars, only increased about 360,000 dollars over the previous year, okay? You look at our operating net income there, 5 million dollars, revenues over expenditures for 2020. And we have to meet a certain debt coverage ratio. We look at this every year. Your requirement on your debt service coverage ratio is 1.05, okay? We're at 20, okay? So, very healthy water and sewage fund, we've done a good job of managing that. You look on the next slide, our sanitation fund, our operating revenues, 4.8 million dollars, increased 133,898. Our expenditures, 4,779, increased about lower 65,000 dollars for the year, but still revenues over expenditures in this fund. You look at our unrestricted net position, 1.6 million dollars, that's about four, a little over four months of what our annual expenditure, expenses are in that fund. So, another good place to be for that fund, so several healthy funds as we just went over. If you look at the next slide, so a second letter that we issue in the report is, under government audit standards, we're required to look at significant internal controls throughout the city, we're required to look at significant laws that we are to be in compliance with, agreements, are we in compliance with our SPOSS referendum and how we're spending the money, are we in compliance with other restricted revenues that are coming in? And so, this is the report where you can find any comments related to those on those pages in the report. On slide 11, page 11 there, the third letter in our report this year, we didn't have one last year, we sort of skipped a year last year because we didn't have enough federal dollars to have a single audit, but this year we were over 750,000 dollars in federal funds, okay? And you may remember the CARES Act, the CARES Act money that we received, and that actually agreement was signed after year end, okay? And that funds will go into fiscal year '21 and be, so we certainly will have a single audit when those will push a lot of governments over. But this is where we're required to look at how we spend our, and how we handle our federal dollars that we receive. We look at internal controls and compliance over those federal grant dollars. And this is the report on that, we had no problems, no comments to report to you there. Then a couple of things that are coming up, you know, GASB, Government Accounting Standards Board issues financial reporting standards that all governments must follow and how we report our revenues, our expenditures, how we report our assets, liabilities, how we account for things. And they issue different standards that we must comply with from time to time. So, some of the significant ones here coming up, we've got GASB 84 and how we handle our fiduciary activities, okay? How we handle fiduciary activity, fiduciary activity meaning we collect funds for others. In other words, we collect funds in, police citations would be a form of that, where we're collecting funds in through municipal court, some of that money might stay with the city, but there's many fines and add-on fees to those citations that go, we collect and submit those to others would be. So, this is going to change a little bit how we report for those, so we'll be on top of that with Jim and Kevin in reporting that for next year. The next slide, GASB 87, this is a biggie, I mentioned to it last year. It controls how we report our leases, okay? GASB issued a great statement this past year during COVID and that great statement was they delayed all their statements back a year, okay? So, we didn't have to report those. Well, GASB 87 is one of those, we'll have to report that now, not in fiscal year '21 that we're in, but in '22, okay? So, you think about, there's two bucket of leases right now on how we report these. You heard me mention earlier that we've got some capital lease funding this year. So, if we get capital leasing funding, for example, on some police vehicles, our intent and the agreement is that we will own those police vehicles at the end of that lease, sort of like a financing on those leases. We recognize those vehicles as assets of the city, we have the lease debt as a payable on our books, okay? But we also have other leases that are referred to as operating, meaning we might rent a facility, or we may have some copier leases, or we may have some other type leases where our intention is we won't own those assets at the end, we're just sort of renting those, okay? Those are just recorded as expenses as we go. Well, now those type leases will shift over and all become capital. Now, we'll have this new asset term that will be on our balance sheet called right-to-use assets. And we'll have the addition of all those future payments added up as debt as a liability on our books. So, that's a big change for all governments. FASB has also issued a similar statement in the private sector world where those will have to be reported the same way. So, getting a handle on all those leases is the first step and we'll be working with Jim and Kevin and trying to make sure we get that reported. They're currently, so like if we're renting a facility, we're paying, say, a monthly rent, those are just in expenses in the budget. The vehicles, those are reported over at the government-wide level where we have the vehicles as an asset and as we make those payments, sort of like paying a loan, we are reducing the loan liability that's on the books and then the interest part is hitting expense, okay? So, we'll now have a loan piece to those right-to-use assets that will have a principal and interest portion to recognize on that. So, depending on how many leases you have where you're paying those monthly rentals would be how onerous this will be to implement. It also works the other way, too. You may have some facilities that you're renting to others, okay? So, now we're going to have a receivable, a long-term receivable for the life of that lease from those individuals or from those people we're leasing to, okay? Because they should have that asset now on their books. So, it's a big change in financial reporting, it will make us think a little bit differently in how we report things and certainly getting a handle on those going forward, but at least we have until fiscal year '22 to implement that, so we've got some time.
Questions?
Anybody have any questions? No? Thank you, Chris. We appreciate the job y'all do, Julie and Kelly. I commend Jim and Kevin and all the other part of our financial department for a great job they do in keeping us straight and definitely keeping us out of jail.
That's what we're all here for.
But thank you very much.
Thank y'all so much, y'all stay safe, have a good night.
You too. Okay, we have Resolution 02, 2021. Mr. Patrick?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For your consideration tonight, item four is a UDO amendment pertaining to industrial development sidewalks. So, a resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Carrollton, State of Georgia to amend Section 4.0204, design standards for industrial development. And the amendment simply would give the city manager discretion on whether or not, and if you'll look, the new language that would be the amendment, the city manager at his sole discretion is authorized to waive this requirement if the proposed development is located on a street where sidewalk does not currently exist within one-quarter mile in any direction and the street is not suitable for pedestrian usage due to road design or other safety considerations. Essentially, this would remove the requirement on industrial development for basically if there's not a sidewalk in proximity to it. for basically if there's not a sidewalk in proximity to it, that they would not be required to put that sidewalk in. We discussed this at the work session, obviously. So, if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to take those now.
Are there any questions? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution for the change? Have a motion? Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay. And next on the agenda is Food Truck Court, Southern Home and Ranch, oh, Southern Home and Garden. Mr. Patrick, I'll let you go with that, too.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again, Mayor and Council. For your consideration tonight, in your packet is a food truck court application. The food truck court would be, the applicant is Southern Home and Garden, Ace Hardware. And this would, of course, be located at their store at one, excuse me, eleven-ten North Park Street in Carrollton. There are sixty-six total existing parking spaces. And they're requesting for a maximum of two food trucks to be allowed at this location. And so, to kind of refresh your memory on some of those requirements, Chapter twenty-two of our code defines what a food truck court is. And there are some restrictions there. No freestanding signs, no city trash receptacles may not be used without prior permission from the city manager. But there's a list of seven or eight restrictions. But this is coming before you tonight. The property owner has provided authorization, if you'll see there on the application. And Frank Cuda, the general manager of the store, has signed his application as well. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those. Otherwise, we're asking for you to approve this tonight.
Do I have a motion to approve the food truck court request? Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, hearing none. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Next item is the bid award for Bankhead Highway Streetscape Landscape Package. Mr. Grisbert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we talked about in the work session, we went out to bid for the landscaping along the Bankhead Highway construction project. We received three bids. This was an RFP, a request for proposal, so we do not have to award to the low bidder. We use the RFP process in almost all of our bids. Most of the time, the low bidder is also the winning bidder. In this case, the second low bidder is the winning bidder. They're graded based on reputation and references and how easy the references are to contact. The winning bidder is Archstone, which is a local company that does excellent work. They've done excellent work for us. And so, the other bidders were Works of Art Lawn and Maintenance out of Columbus, Georgia, and Triscapes, Inc. Again, the final score in using our grading system was an eight point seven for Archstone. And we recommend that you award this project to them in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and twenty-three cents.
Do I have a motion to award this bid?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, the bid will go to Archstone Incorporated. And I believe Mr. McLeod is here.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sure they'll do a great job.
Oh, I know they will.
They do a great job of everything they do.
Yeah, they do. And it's nice to have a local person that has to look at us when he messes something up.
Well, you know, one other thing we thought about is there's, I think they have to warranty this fourteen months. Is that right? There's all this landscaping that's got to be kept watered, that's got to be kept alive. And to do that from a distance, there were a lot of reasons for the grading, but that was a big factor. To do that from a distance, we know, based on our dealings with Archstone, that they're going to do what they say they'll do.
Okay. All right. Bid award for twenty-twenty-one asphalt milling and resurfacing?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have not bid paving, milling, and resurfacing for seven years. So, it was time to rebid this. There's been a lot of changes in prices. There's also been some management changes with some of the paving contractors. We went out to bid, and we bid this based on tonnage of material that we've determined through the years that's the best way to bid milling and resurfacing. And so, we received four bids. Once again, and this is rare for us, the low bid was not the one with the highest score. The second low bid was. We are recommending that we award this to Baldwin Paving. They just scored a nine point seven in the amount of two million, thirty-four thousand, thirty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. They've done a lot of work for us before, and they've done an excellent job. The low bidder was actually Jackson Paving. But again, when we check references, we believe for a thirty-five thousand dollar difference on a two million dollar project that we're better off going with Baldwin. To give you some idea, this is about the same tonnage that we bid out seven years ago. And the winning bid was one and a half million dollars. So, that's not a huge increase over seven years when you think of all that's changed. But again, that's our recommendation, is Baldwin Paving at two million, thirty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. That's Baldwin. They also did Burt Dale. And we'll do Noonan Road first.
Well, at least we know they work.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Do I have, did you have, did Jim have a question? Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to award the bid of the twenty-twenty-one asphalt milling and resurfacing to Baldwin Paving Company? Have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion or questions? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. The motion passes. Okay, we have Resolution three dash twenty-twenty-one, Authorization for the Use of Georgia Redevelopment Powers Law.
Let me make one quick statement before you start. I want to apologize to y'all for you having to see this tonight without it. It should have come to a work session first because there's a lot to it, and Patrick's going to do a great job of explaining it. But just know, we did not find out the kind of deadline we were up against, and that's why we couldn't take the time. This has to go to the legislature now for a referendum in November. If it doesn't pass, then it bumps us all the way to, you'd be twenty-twenty-three actually being able to do a TAD. So, that's why we rushed this up and sent it to you at the last minute.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I believe Haley Beaver, our city deputy city clerk, has put a little visual in front of you. So, if you have any questions, that's basically a visual summary of the TAD process in Georgia and what it takes to establish a TAD for a community. And tonight is the first step for you as the mayor and council in that process. This resolution is basically authorizing your legislative delegation here locally to go to the General Assembly and ask for legislation that would give you all the authorization to go through the referendum to seek, to manage the redevelopment powers law here in Carrollton. And so, again, this is just basically the first step in that process. It's basically a five-step process. You have to seek legislative approval for the referendum. Then you have to hold the referendum. And then if that is approved, then you have to go through defining what the TAD boundary would be. And then you would have to go through a redevelopment plan, which a consultant would help you, or help the community put that together. And then the mayor and council would ultimately have to approve that plan. But there are several moving parts, including identifying who would be your redevelopment agency. You could do that through multiple ways. It's described in the law. You could designate yourself as the redevelopment agency. You could designate another redevelopment entity here in the community that could do that as well. So, but again, this is just your first step tonight.
Just to put it in Mill Village terms, I like to say those are the terms I understand. This does not commit you to do a TAD.
That is correct.
It starts the process to allow you to do it.
That is correct.
If you choose to do it, you would not be able to do it. You would vote on it on December of this year.
Actually, in November, you would vote on it in the general election in November.
But then they would vote on it.
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
And then it would take effect in January.
That's correct.
If you chose to do it. And as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, this would be, this might allow you to designate an area that you wanted to encourage development. The developer could come in, let's say he invested three million dollars on a property. His taxes would not increase because he increased the value of the property. Those taxes would be kept at the original rate.
Well, so, the way the TAD law works, Mr. Grisbert, is that you would establish a baseline by December thirty-first in the year in which the TAD was approved. And then any development that happens on that land and increases the value of the land, then there would be a new value of that property. So, the difference between the new value and the base value would be the increment that would be created. And then, so, I will tell you, in a community, my former life in Rome, how we managed it was basically a developer could come and apply for using a portion of that increment to go back towards paying his redevelopment costs. And I would tell you that is the most physically conservative way to manage a TAD. Obviously, there are some other provisions that are in the Redevelopment Powers Act. You could do bond financing. You could freeze property values. There's a whole host of tools, different tools, within the redevelopment law. But I would recommend to you all basically doing what we call pay-as-you-go approach.
Any questions? Clear as mud.
I'm happy to sit down with any of you and talk to you about this.
No, I'm not insinuating you're good. I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, the thing that I see here as a big advantage is it gives us local control over establishing this as a tool without having to, you know, go to the state.
Yes, it's a one-time, once the legislation gets through the legislature, then it's up to you to how many times you want to use it in the community. But you're capped at ten percent of the total tax digest. So, just be aware of that.
Thank you, Patrick.
You're welcome.
Some of us may need further explanation.
I'd be happy to sit down with you, Councilman.
Well, do you, do I hear a motion to proceed with asking the legislature to approve this for us for this year?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay. Thank you, Patrick. The motion carried to approve that, and we'll get those drawn up, I'm sure, sent into the legislative delegation. Okay, we will go back now and have Mayor and Council announcements and comments. And we'll start with Councilmember Bridges.
I know I talk live, but I don't talk that live. Good evening. I just want everybody to remember that this month is the month that we vote on the SPOSS. The SPOSS has done a lot in our community, especially on Optimist Park. That's one of the projects that looks real pretty and some more parks and recreation in our city. Don't forget about that. And again, happy birthday, Mayor Casey. And all the ones that have been working together to try to keep unity in our community. I pray that we continue to do so, and that's all I have at this time. And thank you.
Councilman Uckel?
Mr. Uckel is just going to concur. I thought that was very well said, Jacqueline.
Councilman Ledbetter?
I just, again, would like to thank everyone that's been involved in our local community, helping out during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, from the hospital and all the extra work that they've had to do, local organizations that have had to step up. And hopefully, we are on the downhill slide, I hope, with a lot of people getting vaccines and that kind of thing. But I just wanted to say that there's a lot of people that have done a lot of work. And I hope that when you see them on the streets, you'll thank them for that. That's all I got.
Okay. All right. Well, I just want to, again, say thank you to Jim and his staff for another great audit report. And I want to thank Mr. Grisbert, even though he gives me a hard time, for managing and working with our departments to do more with less and gives us a, I guess you want to call it a nest egg. I mean, if you heard them talking about how much money, how long we could operate on the money that we have, that is just unreal. It's, I mean, cities, there are so many cities that would love to be in the financial shape that we're in. And to have that much operating funds above what you have expenditures, it's almost unheard of, especially in the year that we've just had. And I want to thank you, even though he gives me a hard time about spending his money. Thank you for a job well done, and all the department heads that work really hard to, I mean, when they ask for something, you know they really need it. And we appreciate all the staffs and all the departments that do this on a daily basis. And again, thank you all for the birthday wishes today. It's been a great day. And with that, Mr. Grisbert, I'll turn it over to you.
I want to thank these managers, all these department heads. We have some excellent managers here, excellent managers of their departments and excellent money managers. They make great decisions, and they really don't require a whole lot of scrutiny. Some more than others, but we've got some cheap, cheap people running these departments, like Tony Richardson is one I think of. He is so cheap, he squeaks when he walks in. Jimmy Beard, and if he asks for something, it is completely and utterly worn out. So, I'm very thankful. And all the others are the same way. They really are. But those do come to mind tonight. Normally, we would do a budget retreat. We would try to go to Callaway or someplace like that to go through the budget with elected officials. And with COVID, we just can't do that. And what I would like to do, what the mayor and I've talked about, is the meetings that we normally have with the department heads. Those take about two days. We would like to talk with you over email and pick dates that work for you, and then call those as a public meeting. And then that would allow you to come in and just, if you want to be there for all of them, you can. If you want to be there for the departments you're interested in, like, people are generally more interested in the rec department, the police department. You could come to those. And if for some reason we set that meeting at a time that you can't make, and you want us to sit down with you and go through it, we will do that. But by calling, by advertising it as a public meeting, you could all be there. If you happen to all be there, we don't have an issue with a quorum. But if you're okay with that, that's what we'd like to do. Tentatively, we are thinking about doing that on March seventeenth and eighteenth. But again, we work for you. If those dates don't work, we'll do them when you say do them. But we're trying to miss certain other conflicts like spring break and that sort of thing. But if you're okay with that approach, and then on the April work session, we would actually go through capital with you then, the capital projects. So, again, if you think about that, and again, I can't stress enough that we work for you. If those dates don't work, we'll do them. We'll do it at three in the morning on a Sunday, if that's what you want. If those dates don't work, we'll do them, we'll do it at 3:00 in the morning on a Sunday, if that's what you want. Because we'll, we'll be here for you. But anyway, that's our suggestion. And then hopefully, it, it's good to do a retreat. It's good to have the, that setting to sit down and talk. We would like, if, if, if COVID does settle down, we'd like for you to consider a retreat in the fall to go through some of the, the things that we all need to talk about at that time. But anyway, thank you.
March, remember? Yeah, we did move it. To, to the 18th. You're right. We do have a work session that.
All right, let us look at that then. And, and good point, Jim. But we'll, we'll get back with you with dates and see if it works for you.
Thank you, Tim. And again, thank you for the great job you do. The other thing I, and Councilwoman Bridges alluded to is the SPOLOX vote coming up this month. Please encourage people to look at the publications that are going to be coming out. It tells you how much the SPOLOX dollars, and you just heard the auditor talk about how, how much of our budget is SPOLOX dollars. And this takes a big burden off the tax, property tax people. And we've done some really great things with SPOLOX dollars. And we've got some really great projects coming up this year. Replacement of a fire station, building a new, I mean, building the new fire station that really needs it to be done, and a new fire truck. And like Tim said, Chief Bearden doesn't ask for anything he doesn't need. And the, because of the management, financial management, we were able to go ahead and buy the property out of the present SPOLOX. And so we're ready to go. And we've got some other things that, you know, that are coming up that, you know, we really, it does a lot of good. If you saw recently in the paper how much money tourism brings into our city each year. And you think about how many SPOLOX dollars, we're talking about a penny on the dollar, but you think about how much SPOLOX money is brought in from softball games, baseball tournaments, dance recitals, I mean, things that most people, unless they're involved with, don't think about it. But I'm telling you, when there's a baseball tournament here or, you know, a softball tournament here or performing arts, you know, you can't find a hotel room here, which is a good sign. And the other thing that April told me, that a lot of people are staying longer, even if they come here for a business trip, they're staying longer because so many places are still shut down. And we've been fortunate enough to be able to open back up a lot of things. So if they come in for a business trip or something, some other recreation, they're staying. There's a, you know, and, and taking advantage of, of seeing Carrollton. And, you know, we are a destination city. I mean, I almost stopped and made a picture Saturday afternoon. I was coming back up Bradley Street and just looking at the number of cars that were in our parking lot and all the way up the street. It was a beautiful day. There were people out on the sidewalks. And I mean, you know, we're so blessed to have that. And so we need to think about how many people come in to our, to our city every, every day and especially on the weekends. But anyway, so do I have a motion to adjourn? I was going to say, do y'all want to stay? Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second? Anybody opposes can stay, but all in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.